Good evening. Welcome to the April 11th session of the Bellingham City Council. We have two announcements this evening on Saturday, April 16th. From 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., the City Council will host its annual retreat at Woodstock Farm at 1200 Checknut Drive in the Gates House. On Monday, April 18th, 2016, at 7:00 p.m., the City Council will host a public hearing on the development agreement between the City of Bellingham and Larrabee Springs Inc., AKA Kai Tech. Bellingham City Council meets all requirements of the State of Washington Open Meetings Act. If you could please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Party of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call.
April Barker.
Here.
Dan Hamel.
Here.
Jane Knudsen.
Here.
Michael Illaquist.
Here.
Roxanne Murphy.
Here.
Pinky Vargas.
Here.
Terri Borneman.
Here.
We're going to start this evening by a presentation from Western Washington University, and then we're going to go into public comment after that. And please note, we do have a public hearing, so we're going to have 15 minutes for public comment. And after that, we're going to start our public hearing. If you have not been called in public comment, we can return to that later on in the meeting. So we are going to start with our presentation from Western Washington University on the impacts of the Western Stands for Washington campaign on our community, and we would like to welcome Stephanie Bowers from Western.
Thank you very much. I have to find one more button to push.
Okay.
There. Yes. Okay. Great. Well, thank you so very much for that kind welcome, and I'm so delighted. Oh, sure. How's that? A little better. Hard to look both ways and speak into the mic. But thank you so very much for affording me the opportunity to speak with you tonight about a campaign, our Western Stands for Washington campaign. In these next 10 minutes, I'm really excited about telling you about our local community donors and the impact that the campaign has had on our community, something that's a little different. Oftentimes, when an organization has a campaign, ours is a comprehensive campaign, which means we raise money for things in addition to buildings, which you might think of as a capital campaign. But lots of times, when people, when organizations do campaigns, you think, "That's great. The organization has done well, succeeded, and has benefited tremendously." And what I'd like to be able to show you, and hopefully elicit some feedback about, is that as Western did our campaign, yes, donors were very generous. The campaign money came to the Western Washington University and our foundation to manage, and through the work of the faculty and the students and the staff, it's really impacting our community. So let's start with our community. 15,000 Western alumni live right here, 2,200 faculty and staff, including myself and a few alums that are here in the county, live right here. You might wonder, well, how many of the student population of Western is from our county, and it's 10.8% of our students. There are about 15,000 students, and those, that alumni figure, that's out of about 120,000 alumni. And Waukam County is the second-largest county of alums in Washington State, or in the country as you might think. And interestingly enough, of those 15,000 alums, 18% of them made a gift during the campaign, which is a really tremendous number. It's nearly twice as many as in the rest of the alumni population, so you should feel really proud about that, in my opinion. And so our number right now, $62.7 million. It's a tremendous number. People have been so incredibly generous. We started this campaign in July of 2011. It was supposed to be a five-year campaign. We passed $60 million last fall. Our original goal was 50 million, but we were very close to 50 million when we announced the campaign, so we did our stretch goal to 60. We're now at 62.7. So thank you so much for the generosity. And what I'd like to point out, if you remember nothing else from this presentation tonight, that nearly 50% of that $60 million came right here from your neighbors, my neighbors, and friends in Waukam County, which is just, which is just really great. A little bit about the numbers. Out of $62 million, over $22 million support scholarships, and from that number, we're just about doubling the amount of scholarship dollars that are available for students now and into the future. $2 million in new equipment, which we'll talk a little bit in a minute, and 108 new endowments. And this number, whether this means a lot to you in this moment, endowments are really important for a foundation and a university, because endowments are there forever. The threshold for an endowment gift is $20,000. Some of these endowments were in the eight-figure, seven-figure category, but those endowments are things where our dollars and funds that remain forever, and only the interest, only the earnings are used to support the students, the faculty, and the staff and the programs. So one of our proudest moments of our campaign was opening our Western City Center. Anybody been there? Yay! And Mayor Viking Kelly helped us open that, cut the ribbon, actually, for that. We're so proud to be in the Herald Building. You can read the stats for yourself, but we're really delighted that now Western is part of the Downtown Art Walk. Our Western Wednesdays are celebrated with Woods Coffee and pastries right there. We're open every day, Monday through Friday. So just since September, as you can see, we've hosted a lot of events, had a lot of visitors, and brewed 430 gallons of coffee. So anytime you need a cup of coffee, just come on in. We'd love to see you. And we're participating fully in the community events, and we're really pleased about it. You might also be interested in seeing some of the local advertising and engagement that this campaign brought about. We've had the ads, as you can see, in the Herald Sunday Edition, online, the campus banners. We've had ads in the Horizon Air in-flight magazines. We've been, we've been around, and just to let you know, 35,000 visits to the campaign website. Nine million-plus people were reached each month that we were in market throughout Washington. And I can't tell you, just on a personal basis, how many times somebody would snap a selfie with themselves in one of the bus ads and send it to me and say, "I can't believe we're on the buses here locally, up and down the I-5 corridor, across the mountain." We were really getting the message out, which we're pleased about. A little bit about economic impact, didn't I hear somebody mention Back to Bellingham? Just a little few things about Back to Bellingham. The next one is coming up, May 12th. And, you know, we estimate about a quarter million dollars per year. All the hotels are booked with our alums, and you'll notice it is Back to Bellingham, not Back to Western, or Back to Campus, or Up to Campus. It's Back to Bellingham, because our alums are really excited about coming back here. The people are coming here from all over, not just Washington, as you can see, from 18 states and even a little bit north of us. And 66% of the guests, you know, fill out the little survey and say that they have been dining out around town. Another, of course, you know, in 10 minutes, how much can I tell you about things, but here's a few things. A gift that was from a Washington State alumnus who lives in Seattle and his family, gave $1 million to help us build Harrington Field. And just a little tiny bit on that economic impact, the women's soccer, intercollegiate soccer, able to play at home now on that field, was able to host a regional tournament just four months after the field was inaugurated. So we're bringing people, we're just, we're bringing a lot of people back here to our community. Oops, wrong way. Sorry. What I'd like to do next is tell you just a few stories, because really what's at the heart of all campaigns are the people who are giving and the impact that they're trying to have and are having on our community. So Fred Kaiser and Grace Persari, Alpha Technologies, a really longstanding firm. They hire many of our grads, they hire interns, they do business all around the world, they have offices on just about every continent. And what was, what collided was a number of wonderful things. Western was moving from engineering technology to mainline engineering. We were with our Institute for Energy Studies, we needed a new engineering laboratory, and so with a gift from the Alpha Technologies company, from Fred and Grace, we were able to build a new lab. Well, let me just tell you kind of the circle of philanthropy. So we're having, going to have a new lab. How does that help us? Well, we are going to do this engineering program, so we need some new faculty. Having a new lab is a great recruitment way, great way to recruit a really phenomenal faculty member, because they got to come and help pick out the equipment for this new lab. Because we have this great new faculty member, a new engineering program, and a new lab, of course, we can recruit phenomenal students to come into the program. And as these students get this experience in the lab, they're able to graduate, get terrific internships, they're really prepped to be really successful members of our community, even back at Alpha Technologies. So it's one of those things that, when you, a gift that keeps on giving, that has an impact way beyond just having a new lab at Western, really means additional wonderful people in our workforce, in our community and beyond. I'd like to tell you a little bit about the Urschig Assistive Technology Resource Center. I don't know how many people are familiar with the term assistive technology. It wasn't something that was very known to me, but anyone who has a disability might need a special device, some special equipment, maybe software on an iPad. It's assistive technology. What kind of disabilities might they have? They might be, might be blind, they might be deaf, maybe they have some learning disabilities, maybe they have some physical disabilities, maybe they have some attention deficit, maybe it's a behavioral issue. But we have in this lab all kinds of tools and devices for students with some disability issues. So how do they get them? This lab is something that certainly our students that are learning to be teachers need to be able to use. They need to know about what kind of things are available, so they can, when they find out about students who have needs, they can help them. But also, the therapists and educators in our school districts, they can come and check out these pieces of equipment. Maybe it's medical and mental health professionals who might need them. What about the families? Families can come to the Urschig Assistive Technology Resource Center and try some of these things out with their kids. They can check them out, take them home, see if they work, because so many things are expensive. You want to try it out before you maybe make that, before you decide to purchase it. And then finally, because of the Urschig's gift, we are able to resource out some of those dollars to the families themselves. They can apply for grants, and they can get some dollars, $200. We did several of those last year, so that they can actually then purchase some of these items, or maybe some software for their computers or their iPads. So there you have it, longtime stalwarts, treasures of our community, Herb and Billy, who made a gift to make it possible to really help our schools and our kids. The Fraziers. What an amazing story this is. Bus Frazier actually had the Chevy dealership here in the '50s. And Alice, and he started at Western, and then he actually graduated from the University of Washington. Alice graduated from the Woodring College of Education and taught in a one-room schoolhouse nearby for about 12 years. They were salt-of-the-earth people. They didn't have a lot of expenses. They saved their money, they believed in education, and they believed, Bus always said that what he believed is that even though he didn't go to school at Western, he believed in supporting the community that supported him. And so when they passed away, and Alice passed away about two years ago, at the ripe age of, I think, 102, their gift, $6 million. They had already given us $2 million in trust, $8 million, the largest gift in Western's history. And those dollars are being used for scholarships for local students, they're being used for a lecture series. In fact, it just was launched at the Mount Baker Theater last week for a number of departments on campus. It's really amazing what that money can do, and that is all endowed. Here's an example of a gift to talk about direct impact, direct significant impact. As I'm sure you know, our hospital, Peace Health, just like everyone across the country, has a very strategic directive to have more nurses who have the Bachelor of Science degree. And so Western responded to that and said, "Okay, we'll do that." And not only do we, did we start the BSN degree, taking RNs, giving them the other two years to get their Bachelor's degree, but also we have an emphasis in the palliative care area. And our community, as I'm sure you're aware, is one that we're really trying to be a model community for our country in how we care for our elders in their times, before they get to the point of needing hospice care. And support for River Styx has helped with scholarships for the nursing program. It's helped us with a number of initiatives in the palliative care. Don't need to say very much about this one. We were just really pleased that one of the things that Harriet decided to do at Western was to take our 1959 Planetarium. I don't know if anybody's been up to, has everybody been to this Planetarium show? It's amazing. If you haven't been there, please come, because we now have the latest in 3D digital technology. The projector is great, the seats are wonderful, and what's really terrific, and the impact on our community, is that the school kids from all over are coming with their teachers to the Planetarium shows. It's great. Sybil Sanford and Ford Hill. Sybil Sanford, longtime Waukam County resident artist, pianist, had started this, the Sanford Piano Series, named it after her father with a gift. Ford Hill, longtime professor at Western, has joined her with his gifts. And, you know, so many members of our community come to, onto campus at the Performing Arts Center to listen to pianists from all over the world, and all the proceeds go into music Finally, I don't think you can come to this, because it sounds like you're having a retreat on Saturday, but the second annual TEDx at Western is this Saturday. It was, last year, it was the largest TEDx in the state of Washington with over 1,000 participants. Really great. Part of it made possible by the Cole Professor of Entrepreneurship. I've talked a lot. I'd love to have you have an opportunity to ask me any questions, give me feedback. We're just so pleased to be able to be part of, Western is so pleased to be part of our community. Western Stands for Bellingham, for Waukam County, and so many of the donors really stood up tall and are making things happen. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Stephanie. I feel like Western is making great strides, especially with the downtown location and having us all be more integrated and working together. Council members, do you have any questions for Stephanie? Comments? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate your presentation. We're going to move to the public comment period. This is a 15-minute public comment period. If someone could, thank you, Michael, grab the list. And again, I'm going to keep this to 15 minutes today, so if I don't get to your name and you wish to stay later, I can bring public comment back again after our hearing. So I can't read the first name. Maybe if you know that you, and if you could please state your name for public comment, so that we have that for the record. After our next person is Water, wait, Water Department, oh, okay, hold on. I think this is Christopher, are you Christopher?
Yeah.
Okay, Christopher, then David Berg and Cameron Jennings. If you could please line up here, and then we'll get through as many people as we possibly can. And again, the three-minute timer is here.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. Christopher Bruce Diley, and speaking on the, objecting to the court ordered AA. And I'll just read my letter. I've had my letters published in Christianity Today and USA Today, but for some reason, I've got real bad allergies, by the way. For some reason, I can't get my letters published in the Seattle Times or the Bellingham Herald, so I just submitted one to the Alaska Dispatch News, because I grew up in Alaska, and sometimes they publish my letters. But so far, I put it in on March 31st, and they haven't published it, so I'll just go ahead and read it. But it's objecting to court ordered AA. And even though AA has got a lot of helpful things about it, there's also harmful things, so I don't, I don't think it should be court ordered. And this is my letter, very quickly. And I start with a quote. "He has only to lift up the rug to discover in even the greatest theologies a measure of double talk." That's Edmund Trébanier in Is There a Biblical Metaphysic? The religious paradoxes in AA can be spun favorably or unfavorably, depending on who is doing the spinning. It's certainly not the neophyte at risk of major guilt trips that can take years, if not decades, to resolve. AA should not be court ordered. It's been court ordered since the 1930s, yet DUI continues. Worse yet, young people are increasingly court ordered into Celebrate Recovery and even more religiously explicit program. More severe laws are needed instead. Public safety emphasis should be on crime prevention instead of religious programming under the guise of rehabilitation. Practicing altruism or agapi love over eros love requires willingness and the wherewithal that is unfortunately too often unrealistic, unless you're a monk in a monastery, a point noted in the Brothers Kermazov. So it's not hard to see how one might lose their way. But AA co-founder Bell W. is resorting to LSD and sobriety, along with his wife Lois, Father Dowling, and other AAs, see AAs pass it on. Believing it to improve one's relationship with God certainly raises, certainly raises a red flag about AA. Yet ephemeral secular alternatives leave the choice, AA, Celebrate Recovery, or Siberia. Of course, AA can be helpful, though so can praying on one's knees five times a day in a mosque ostensibly. Will that be next? So, yeah, I've got about 50 seconds left, and I'll just tie this in with the issue of the grizzly bears, the reintroduction of the grizzlies into the Cascades currently under consideration. And you guys, some of you remember me over the years coming here and sharing a bear story of how we were attacked in Alaska, my friend and I, and the bear spray did not stop the bear. So I'd just like to give a reminder that bear spray is not enough to stop a bear. And that's in, the story was from 20 years ago, 1996. It was in the Anchorage Daily News, September 29th, 1996. It was called "A Can of Spray and a Lot of Luck." You can find that online. And the reason why I'm objecting to court ordered AA and religion, et cetera, my friend Keith Benner, the man that was with me when we were attacked by the bear, 10 years after we were attacked by the bear, he committed suicide in a seminary. He was a religious emissionary, and he committed suicide. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Christopher. David Berg?
Well, the only time I come here is when I got a personal problem with the city. And my problem is water, and the water department, and the treatment that I got from the people there. We got the meters put in a year and a half ago. So all of a sudden, I've got a leak in my system. So I go to the water department, I call them, and they say, "Well, it's on your property." Well, sadly, it wasn't. What it was, they put the box in, then they hooked their connection to my connection, and I had to go hire two people to dig it up. Because of my age, I'm 90, so I can't do what I used to do. So we got to where they hooked it to my hose. Lo and behold, there was the leak. It was coming backwards. I had talked to the people about it, coming backwards into the box, filling up the box. Oh, well, they got, they hurried out and got out there, and they fixed it. It took them a little while. There was about four trucks and about eight people standing around, and they couldn't quite get the thing tight in the way they needed to, even with a torque wrench. They didn't know how to work that. So finally, they fixed it. Now, I went into the Treasury Office here to pay my bill, and I asked for a little rebate on the water that leaked out. I didn't want to pay for water that I didn't use, which I think is right. But, oh, no, you got to do this, you got to do that, you know? I've lived here since 1949, and I think this is the worst episode that I've had with the City of Bellingham. From the water department to the Treasurer's Office, I was treated pretty badly, and I am not going to pay for that water that went on the ground. I think it's the city's responsibility, you know? So whatever I have to do, I'm going to do. If you want to get it solved reasonably, that will be fine and dandy with me. But if you don't, so be it. That's, I've had it. I'm too old to put up with this BS. I'm sorry I used that word. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berg. If you could leave your contact information for us, so we can follow up with you, if you could maybe leave it on, with the mayor, that would be wonderful. Thank you. Cameron Jennings, and then I have Mackenzie Dent and Donald.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Cameron Jennings, and I live at 2601 Grove Street. I am speaking tonight on behalf of over 200 residents and business leaders who have signed the online petition that I created. We are extremely dissatisfied with the recent changes to the historic decorative-style street lamps around Broadway Park, the City Center, and Fairhaven. The original glass globes and bulbs were removed and replaced with cold-colored LEDs and plastic prismatic globes which do not fit the neighborhoods. The problem is both with the color of the bulbs and the glare produced by the new plastic globes. These neighborhoods are all nationally registered historic districts. Their unique character and historic integrity have been spoiled by this ill-advised action, an action that was taken to achieve benefits which easily could have been achieved at a lower cost and without disruption to the neighborhoods. An action that was carried out with no public input or community consensus, and which violates over a dozen goals and policies set forth in the Comprehensive Plan. For example, CDP 74, "Street lighting where necessary should reflect the design theme of the neighborhood. Modern lighting in Fairhaven, as an example, would be inappropriate. Lighting should be such that it performs its function without being unduly disruptive to adjacent neighborhoods." Clearly, this has, this has not been achieved. We loved our street lamps. Their soft amber glow provided an atmosphere that was timeless and romantic, almost magical. People in our neighborhoods work very hard and invest a lot of resources, often at the behest of the city, to renovate and restore their homes in order to maintain historical integrity. To have such an ill-considered decision by the city clearly damage that integrity is a slap in the face. The new lights are more well-suited to a parking lot or prison yard. They look more like security lights than something designed for a historic neighborhood. Now, we are not asking that things be put back exactly the way they were. We appreciate the cost-saving benefits of LEDs and of networking the lights. We are, however, asking that the city act to restore the historic character of our neighborhoods. Specifically, replace the original glass globes, retrofitted with warmer LED bulbs. These can be paired with the same networked light controllers that are currently installed. These changes will actually result in higher efficiency, more cost savings, increased light quality, and better public safety than what is currently in place. The primary problem with the lights is not brightness, but glare. It reduces quality of life and public safety. It is causing residents to close their blinds and stop enjoying their front porches at night. Less eyes on the street means less safety. It also harms the night visibility of drivers and cyclists. Bad visibility means less safety. The offensive glare is a direct result of the new prismatic plastic globes. Using the original glass globes will eliminate glare, producing a soft, even-filtered light. Finally, as an added benefit, the warmer LED bulbs will actually produce an objectively-measured, better quality of light, and will be more efficient than the current LEDs. This remedy would achieve all the stated goals of the original project, and would do so for less money and without harming the integrity of Bellingham's historic districts. Thank you.
Thank you, Cameron. Mackenzie Dent, please, there's no clapping, so that everyone has a safe environment to participate in. Thank you. And I'm actually going to call a public comment after Mackenzie, because we're almost at 15 minutes already, and so Joseph, Dennis, Martin, Rory, and Bob, we will pick up public comment again after our hearing, okay?
Good evening, council members and Mayor Linville. My name's Mackenzie Dent, and I'm the Local Issues Coordinator for the Associated Students of Western. First of all, I'd like to thank those of you who took time to met with, to meet with Western students on Friday for our Local Advocacy Day event. It was extremely helpful for us and provided students with a really great opportunity to communicate with local representatives, so we really appreciated your support and your input with that. Secondly, I'd like to compliment the work of the city in implementing LED lighting. The Associated Students is in favor of continuing this project, and we would like to see LED improvements in even more areas near our campus. Since walking is the primary mode of transportation for many Western students, lighting is crucial in our ability to get to and from classes safely. So we appreciate your effort to approve, improve lighting in Bellingham, and we hope that we can continue to work with you to improve the lives of Western students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mackenzie. Okay, we are going to move into our public hearing. We're having a public hearing to consider a request from Lydia Place to docket a Comprehensive Plan Amendment and zoning change for review in 2016. We're going to start with an opening from Rick Sepler, who's going to give us an overview of the zoning changes.
Members of the council, we come before you tonight for consideration of a request
Members of the council, we come before you tonight for consideration of a request by Lydia Place to docket an amendment to the Bellingham Comprehensive Plan for Review this year. The request includes amendment to the Puget Neighborhood Plan. Area 6 is shown on the map, that's the location. You can see a little greater detail right here in the aerial photo with it. And it's a proposal to amend both that neighborhood plan and the Puget Neighborhood Zoning Table. This amendment is requested by Lydia Place to allow for the construction of 8 to 11 studio units on their 1.4-acre site. As council is aware, we typically, well, we're required by law only to allow amendments to the comprehensive plan once per year. In most cases, those amendments are processed through the Planning Commission and then brought forward after recommendation to this body for consideration in public hearing. This is a unique year because we are amending the comprehensive plan this time. As such, there is a specific provision in the municipal code which allows us to bring an application directly to you. And if you consider it worthy for consideration, it would be paired with the comprehensive plan and brought forward simultaneously. Tonight's meeting and this hearing specifically is not whether this project should be approved or denied. Tonight is solely to consider whether this project meets the criterion for inclusion and potential amendment. The Planning Commission will subsequently hold a public hearing on this matter, as will this body. Full review will go through, public will be afforded opportunities for comment, and will move forward to consider it on its merits. In looking at whether a project should be docketed, we narrowly looked to see whether it meets the criteria contained in Section 2020-030, the annual docketing criteria of the Bellingham Municipal Code. That criteria has identified specific means to evaluate a proposal. The first is if the planning department has resources and staff to accommodate its review. Not every year do we have time to consider merited proposals. This year, as we'll note in the staff recommendation, we do. And the second was the identification of five key criterion to evaluate whether it should be included in the docket or not. Those address whether the issues are appropriately addressed in the comprehensive neighborhood plan, whether the proposal would serve the public interest, whether the public interest would be served by considering the proposal in the next amendment cycle rather than delaying it till next year's cycle, whether the amendment addresses changing circumstances, changing community values, or corrects or updates information, and finally, though not applicable in this case, whether state law or a decision of the court mandates a change to be considered. Notice this public hearing was published in the Bellwiki Herald 30 days prior to tonight's public hearing. Notice was mailed to property owners within 500 feet of the subject property, as well as the president of the Puget Neighborhood Association and Puget Neighborhood Representative on the mayor's Neighborhood Advisory Committee or Commission. A neighborhood meeting was conducted by Lydia Place on March 8th. Issues that were raised are typical project-level issues regarding parking for the new units, potential impacts on wetlands, and security for Lydia Place residents and neighbors. While those issues certainly are appropriate and important, they're not germane to the issues before today. In essence, they would be considered more fully if it is docketed and brought forward as a proposal. The applicant is in attendance, and later tonight, Schultz Willows will do a presentation to introduce you to the project and the basis for it. Staff has reviewed this application, and we believe the proposal has the potential to serve the public interest. The proposal could help address significant changes in our community's conditions and circumstances, specifically in regards to homeless and unsheltered peoples. In looking at our comprehensive plan, there are a number of specific goals that are on point. They would increase the supply of housing, since this would be permanent housing for low-income households. It would meet our requirements for social services. It would promote increased housing opportunities for all economic segments and special need groups. And it would encourage and support social service and human service organizations that support these goals. As such, staff, after careful review, recommend that you do docket this proposal and direct the Planning Commission to consider it as part of its comprehensive plan review and this year's amendment cycle. Towards that end, we have provided in your packets a draft resolution for your consideration. Staff would request action on this matter this evening due to coordination with the timeline for the comprehensive plan process. We also would like to reserve the ability to respond at the end of public comment to any issues or questions that are raised so we can clarify the record before you make your decision. With that, I'll introduce Schultz Willows, who will provide a brief overview of the request. Could I ask you for assistance? There are six buttons which are five too many for me.
If you're at home, the mute button is not on, we're just having technical difficulties. Yeah. Consider this your advertisement break.
I'll let Haley get that loaded up for me.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience. Good evening, council, mayor, commission, and friends. My name is Schultz Willows, and I oversee development and community engagement on behalf of Lydia Place. Our executive director, Emily O'Connor, apologizes that she herself could not be here with us tonight to present this to you. This application and issue are very dear to her heart as she spent the last year meticulously and diligently working with our board of directors, city and planning staff to make this appeal to you. Emily and I, on behalf of the community, want to thank you for taking the time to consider this proposal for rezoning our property at 1701 Gladstone Street. As I'm sure you're all aware, our beautiful city is struggling with both a rising housing shortage and a rising tide of homelessness. In the past, in the last two years, Bellingham has experienced a 27% increase in homelessness. And in the past year alone, a staggering 50% increase in the number of individuals sleeping unsheltered in doorways, tents, cars, and other places not meant to be called home. This comes at a time when our nonprofit community partners are working tirelessly to increase housing placements. Coupled with both critically-low vacancy rates and the resulting increase in housing costs, our community is facing nothing short of a humanitarian crisis. As a dedicated partner serving homeless individuals and families for nearly 27 years in our community, Lydia Place is at the table and answering the call from the mayor and other community leaders to do whatever we can to address this crisis. In the past four years, Lydia Place has built new programs, launched new partnerships, doubled our housing placement capacity, and recently purchased a new property to function as permanent supportive housing for disabled and chronically homeless women. In every way we can, we're bringing resources to the table, being a flexible and responsive organization that our community has grown to count on. As many of you know here tonight, Lydia Place has been operating a transitional housing facility for homeless mothers and their children for over 26 years in the Puget Neighborhood. The facility provides a safe haven for roughly 25 of our community's most vulnerable families every year. Though rarely easy, this program is a crucial component of our community's response to homelessness for mothers and children, and is one of the ways Lydia Place is able to engage at-risk families and vulnerable children in critical early interventions. The facility is attached to our small program office hub and includes a classroom, family resource room, community garden, orchard, and is surrounded on three sides by green space and trails. This beautiful piece of property is about 1.4 acres. 18 months ago, as rates of homelessness began solidifying their upward course, our city partners began asking who in the nonprofit sector would be willing to step up and develop housing for homeless households. It was then that Lydia Place staff and its board of directors began the process of determining the feasibility of building additional housing capacity at our Gladstone Street property. The first step was to begin the dialogue with the planning department to educate ourselves about what factors to consider and what steps we would need to take to apply for a rezone. The need for more housing, more affordable housing, and more housing for homeless households is urgent, well-documented, and supported. Currently, there are over 650 individuals that are literally homeless in our community, and that number is on the rise. The concept of this proposal is to expand the campus of support for homeless young mothers, building on our dedication and commitment to interrupting the cycle of poverty for the most vulnerable children experiencing homelessness today with their mothers. There are some staggering statistics and realities here in our community related to this population. During our last point-in-time count, it was found that 81 families with a mother 18 to 24 received housing program services in 2015. 19 families with a mother aged 18 to 24 who were pregnant or parenting are homeless and on our community's waiting list, waiting for services right now. On any given day, one in five of our community's homeless are children under the age of 10. Children experiencing homelessness are three times more likely to have emotional and behavioral problems. While it's difficult to determine precise differences between children experiencing housing instability and their peers who are living in poverty, we know homeless children have coexisting risk factors leading to high cumulative risk. Early interventions such as the Lydia Place Parenting Support Program, case management, child therapies, and connection to community resources that are provided by Lydia Place are essential in breaking the cycle of poverty and homelessness for this most vulnerable population. Adding to this campus by building 8 to 10 units of housing for young mothers makes sense for so many reasons. First, Lydia Place acts as a steward of a community resource, and we already own this piece of property, which will greatly reduce the cost of development. Second, the campus is centrally located, close to downtown, in a park, and recreation services such as Civic Field, Arnhem Aquatic Center, and within walking distance to call Kosher Elementary, and on a newly-created facility of Bellingham Safe Routes to School Route and just a quarter mile from the bus line. Third, this population, homeless young mothers and their children, are highly vulnerable, making access to support critical to the effectiveness of supportive housing. Building housing such as that which is proposed on our existing campus will give these mothers and their children access to daily support of their housing case managers, parent educators, children's programming, life skills classes, and our incredible community garden, which you can see up at the top. Fourth, as you can see from these maps and photographs and those which were presented before, the Lydia Place campus is nestled in a green belt of the Puget Neighborhood, reducing the neighborhood impact of such a development. Though, we recognize and acknowledge the concerns and feelings of our two closest neighbors and any others who might prefer such units not be built on their street. There are many factors of feasibility for this project. The first one that we tackled was the issue of wetlands on the property. Last year, Lydia Place hired a local firm to delineate the wetlands and review a basic proposed footprint for the building and analyze the potential wetland impact. The result was positive and indicated that a structure like the one we're considering could be built without impacting the wetland itself and that the impact to the surrounding buffer could be offset by enhancing the wetlands with native plants. In addition to the wetlands, we've had preliminary site reviews with our engineer regarding stormwater, and we've been collecting data on the use of our parking lot by staff and guests for the past eight months and residents for the past two years. Further, our initial conversations regarding design focused on security and designing for neighborhood cohesion. To this end, we also met with Officer Osterkamp to learn about the crime prevention through environment design program and how we can incorporate these building and design strategies into our plans. Lastly, Lydia Place cannot apply for funding for this project, either at the state or local level, until a rezone is secured. Lydia Place is dedicated to our community, and our willingness to consider this project comes from our commitment to maximizing our resources for the public good. We are committed to being respectful and responsive neighbors while balancing the complicated needs of the families that we serve struggling with homelessness. We are grateful for the assistance and guidance of the planning department staff, the dialogue with our neighbors, and we trust the council will make the right decision for our community. Thank you for 26 years of support.
Thank you, Schultz. If you want to join Rick over here, we're just going to give the council a minute to ask some questions. Rick had asked...
If there are any clarifying questions about either staff or the applicant, it would be appropriate at this time prior to the hearing. If not, certainly we're available after the hearings, after the public testimony portion of the hearing is concluded to answer any questions you might have.
Is everyone okay with that? Okay? All right, well, let's head on to the public hearing then. I'm just going to read a couple names so you can see. We're going to start with Craig Dunn, then Nancy Mary, Lydia Zellmer, Ashley, I'm guessing on this one, Thurmondson, and Riley Cleary. So if you could please line up here, and remember you have three minutes. There is no clapping and cheering in the council chambers, and we're going to stick to the three minutes so that we can get through everyone. Thank you, Craig.
Thank you. My name is Craig Dunn. I reside at 682 Chuckanut Drive, and I am on the Board of Directors of Lydia Place. In fact, I'm the longest-serving board member currently on the Lydia Place Board, and wanted to speak a little bit about why I became engaged with the agency and why I think that this is an important issue for the council to bring forward. When I joined the board, I'd just joined the faculty at Western Washington University and had been courted for probably two or three years before finally agreeing to join the board. And that was largely because of the fact that we have a really solid board of directors and at the time, and we still do, though with different person, very strong executive leadership of the organization. But having said that, I think sometimes we're a failure. When I joined the board, we were a $400,000 agency. Our budget this year is 1.4 million. That's quite a change. It's quite a growth, and yet homelessness is still on the rise. And I know that your efforts and ours are all directed towards the same end. What we want to do is to end homelessness in our community. That's our vision, and that's one of the visions of this council. In order to do that, we focus not just on homelessness, not just on providing housing. We've actually made very deliberate choices as a board at the strategic level not to fully engage with housing first. And the reason we've done that is because we realize that there's still a need for intermediate housing of the sort that we provide on this site. But it's also not just about that. Ultimately, we want to assist our clients in a transition from homelessness to independence. Sustained independence is the word that you heard used or the phrase that you heard used. Sustained independence doesn't happen in six months in this house. That's why we have all these ancillary services that we provide, not only to our own graduates of the house, but also to other agencies in the community, which is why our budget has gotten so large. A large part of that now is contract work that we do on behalf of other agencies. The last point I want to emphasize is that in the matter before the body today, it's about just one thing. It's about urgency. There would not be the need for an amendment unless this were an urgent need. Otherwise, we could wait for another day, but we can't wait for another day. And I think there's been enough evidence provided for that and in support of the urgency already. But I just want to say, that to me is the heart of the issue here when it comes to establishing an amendment at this point in time rather than waiting for tomorrow. The need really is urgent. The need really is urgent. I want to thank you for your time, for the mayor, for the council. I also want to thank you for the partnerships that you've engaged in with this agency over the years that I have gotten to know you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Greg, and good timing. Nancy, is it Nancy or Nancy Mary? Is that next? No? Okay, no problem. That's never a problem. Lydia Zellmer, and if I have not pronounced your name, please state it for me.
I'm Linda, Linda Zellmer, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just take a minute of your time. I have a unique position in that I'm a real estate agent, full-time, every day, all the time, so I'm looking for permanent housing for people with no barriers, and it's hard. It's really hard to find them. I have lists of buyers that I cannot find places for because of our housing crisis here and our shortage of inventory here. And so you can imagine that trickle-down effect then, because then I go to the Lydia Place meetings, and we're talking about housing people with huge barriers, and we're looking at all this lovely funding that we have to augment rents, but what in the world are you going to rent? Because it's just not out there. And I have hundreds of emails every day, but I've got to tell you, every day I get emails from other RE/MAX agents saying, "I need housing. I need a rental. Do you know of a rental?" And these are people that have no barriers. They have no dogs, no cats. They're lovely people. They're perfectly clean. They can't find a place to rent. And then I go to Lydia Place, and we're trying to find shelter, permanent shelter, for people with loads of barriers that no landlords are going to touch, no matter how much funding we have. So what we're looking at here is the old way of doing stuff, where we used to subsidize and get them in housings and pat ourselves on the back because we'd done a great job. There is no housing anymore. So we can pile up these subsidies as high as we want to pile them. It's not going to do any good unless we have your help getting some housing so we can put them in the housing. And I have to tell you, I have a heart for Lydia Place, so I'm very, very biased, but there is not an organization that will steward these women, their children, your money, your efforts, better than Lydia Place. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Ashley Thurmondson?
Thomason.
Thomason! And then I believe, is it Riley Cleary next? Ooh, this is getting better all the time.
All right. Well, you'll have to excuse me. I'm getting over a cold, so sorry for the weird voice. But I'm Ashley Thomason. I'm the Housing Program Supervisor at Lydia Place, and I just wanted to come and share a little bit about what this project could mean for our clients and for the community. So I've actually worked at Lydia Place for coming up on eight years now, and over that time, I've seen the homeless population itself change and the needs of that population change. I've also seen Lydia Place, time after time, step up and meet the changing needs of the homeless population and of the community, and this project is just another example of how we are committed to making a difference in the Bellingham community. We've seen powerful changes in the clients that we serve, but we've still found that we need to do better about providing early childhood intervention and increasing supports to young, single parents in order to put an end to the cycle of poverty and increase our childhood outcomes. Having the opportunity to build on our current location, where we already have our existing transitional living facility, we already have onsite case management there, onsite parenting educators there, we have a fully-equipped classroom there. It's a well-monitored and safe area. This would allow us to make the most of our resources in terms of providing intensive intervention and support to these young families early on and increasing their chances of sustained independence. Another reason to support this project, as Linda and Schulze have echoed, is that we just need more housing units in our community. In Waukesha County, we've dipped below a 1% vacancy rate here. There's not enough units to have everybody, even if everyone had the resources to get housing and to get a home of their own. So as a result, rental rates are continuing to skyrocket due to the demand of rental supply. So these eight to 10 units, it seems like a small amount, but it's really a start to creating enough housing opportunities for everyone in our community to have the basic need of housing met. So, yeah, not only as a Lydia Place employee, but as a community member who desires to see Bellingham as a happy, healthy place to raise a family, I urge your support of this project, and I thank you for your time and support thus far.
Thank you, Ashley. So the next name I have is Adrian. Is that, was that then, is that yours on there? No? Adrian Lilly? Is that right? Anyone's name almost? Helena? Okay, that is a pass. Okay, no, thank you so much. No problem. The next name I have is Jeff. Jehovah? Okay, thank you very much. Jeez, I feel like you guys are challenging me this evening. And then after that, I have Mike Parker.
Thank you for your time. My name is Jeff Jacoby. I am one of the two neighbors that the Lydia Place has, and I keep hearing the term "community" over and over in this statement, and being part of this community has been an absolutely wonderful part of my life. Bellingham's an amazing city. It's a beautiful place to live. The opportunities here are, you know, to live how one wants to live is pretty incredible. But also, a smaller part of the community is the neighborhood that you live in, and the neighborhood that you live in are the houses around you. And I'd like to say that I would love to support something that helps this epidemic that is going on within our society as a whole nationwide. It's not just Bellingham, but I would like to say that I fully support this. But the problem is, is it's directly affecting my community and directly affecting my house. Economically, it's going to drive the price of my house down, period. You're basically changing the tone of the neighborhood by putting in a multi-unit place in literally the gateway of that neighborhood. You drive down Gladstone, that is how you get into that neighborhood, and you are putting in a multi-unit place that changes the character of what you're seeing as you're coming down that hill. We, I won't speak for others, but myself have been very patient in the 14 years that I've lived there with the transitional aspect of the housing. There is a lot of problems involved in it. You are dealing with people who are having a tough go in life. You are dealing with people who don't necessarily understand, you know, what is kosher and what isn't in life, and that sometimes overflows out of your building, and sometimes it ends up on the street, and sometimes it ends up in front of my house. And sometimes I have to explain that to my 12-year-old daughter of, hey, understand this is what's going on. And it's unfortunate and it's sad, but it's also, it is a direct impact upon my well-being, upon my living. And that's, you know, I hate being a NIMBY. I'm being a NIMBY right now. And it's unfortunate, it makes me sad, but it, like I said, it is something that I don't feel is good for my neighborhood, for my community, and that's basically, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. And I have Mike Parker. And that's the last name on my list, but if there's anyone who wishes to speak on this, please, we would like everyone to have an opportunity, so just come line up down here if you care to say anything. Thanks.
Looks like my timer's ready, huh? Good evening, council members, Mayor Linville, and members of the planning department. My name is Mike Parker, and I'm the Director of the Waukesha Homeless Service Center. We've been partners with Lydia Place in this effort to combat homelessness for years, ever since my career in homelessness started in 2009 and well before. They've been a great partner to work with, and we wish them continued success. But on to what you're here for this evening, and one of the things that, when I heard Rick talk about, changes in condition in our community. You've heard some statistics about that tonight, and as you're well aware, we participate every year in a point-in-time count. For the last two years in a row, Bellingham has seen an increase, and I think you also heard, despite increased resources and new subsidies. But we've, so with this increased need and the lack of affordability, we have a very, very serious housing gap. You've heard it named as a crisis. I think I would agree with that. This is a crisis. So whenever we hear a prospect of one of our really solid housing partners that subscribes to our coordinated entry system, which means that folks only have one door to be able to go in to get services, which is really, really helpful, we applaud that. And so I'm here just on behalf, just to talk a little bit about that partnership and how this addresses some of that severe housing shortage. You heard from the folks in the realty business how difficult it is, and I think she did a really nice job explaining how even that could be harder for somebody in poverty and somebody who's experienced homelessness. Lydia Place works with us diligently to house these exact folks that need really excellent supportive services, which they provide. They have a long history of serving both individuals and families, and they have helped them achieve stability in the housing. And in my work, we know that having housing is the answer to homelessness. So again, we celebrate the prospect of having new units in our inventory. We think that a good infill project like this within city limits is just a great addition to our network, so I hope that you will consider it in the planning packet before you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. If you could please come forward and just state your name for the record. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Haugen, and, do you need my address? No? Okay. I am a school counselor here in Bellingham, and I want to speak in support of the Lydia Place organization and their request to build eight to 11 units at the Gladstone property. In my work, I see firsthand how homelessness impacts children. We have homeless children at our school that cannot find housing in Bellingham and thus have to be bussed from Maple Falls, which is an hour-long bus ride every morning and afternoon. We have children that are sleeping in cars, in motels, and in places that are unsuitable for people to live, and that that severely impacts a child's ability to learn, ability to attend, and ability to feel safe at home. And so because I see the impact directly on children every day, I know that having stable housing is what kids need to be able to learn in the classroom. It breaks my heart to see kids go home every day not knowing where they're going to sleep at night, whether they're going to have, you know, warm food to eat. I have kids that have no access to a kitchen, and so I send food home in their backpacks. And so I know that having this housing in Bellingham in a neighborhood where they can walk to Carl Kozier and go to school, as opposed to being bussed for 45 minutes, or, you know, being at grandma's house one night, aunt's house the next night, wherever they can go, is really vitally important to the lives of these kids and to the vitality of our community. So again, I urge you to approve this proposal, and, you know, I understand about not wanting housing to be built in your neighborhood. However, this facility has been in the Puget neighborhood for 26 years, and it is a staple in that community, and, you know, I believe that it will continue to improve the community that it's in and be a benefit to our entire Bellingham community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Is there anyone else that would care to make a comment on our public hearing this evening? No? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing portion, and we're going to go into comments, but I'm just going to veer sideways just for a moment. I just wanted to take a moment to recognize that our Representative Luanne Van Wern is here this evening, so thank you for joining us and being out in our community. We appreciate your presence here. Thank you. So let's start with Councilmember Murphy.
Well, Schulze and her boss asked if they could get some time to meet with me to go over this project, but I'd already looked into it quite a bit, and I said, "I'm sorry, I don't have time to meet, but I support wholeheartedly the work of Lydia Place," and that is why I am willing to put myself out there, and I am going to make a motion that we pass the resolution to docket the Lydia Place Comprehensive Plan Amendment and zoning change review in 2016.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and second in front of us? Any discussion? Councilmember Hamel?
I have questions for Schulze. Assuming all things fall into place, what's the timeline for this project?
All right, so the timeline for the project? Oh, thank you. As I know right now, we have to begin the fundraising cycle for the project. I think that when we started this whole thing about a year ago, we were looking at about a three-year, three-to-five-year plan. At this point, I think Emily and I are looking about three years down the road. If we can be more aggressive than that and raise the funding, we're certainly happy and excited to do that. We know that we have a crisis on our hands, and the minute that we get the "go" button, we're going to go. So, yeah.
Councilmember Lillyquist?
Well, I definitely support Lydia Place, but it's a simpler decision right now. It's, the question is not whether I support the project or not, it's whether or not there's a maybe. If there's a maybe, if it seems halfway there, then by law, we're required to put it on the docket. This is clearly a maybe, so I'm going to support the resolution. But I would like to ask, when this is evaluated, what are the primary criteria the planning department will use to determine whether or not there's anything negative about this proposal?
If I might respond, clearly, the first step is to look at SEPA. We'll be doing a State Environmental Policy Act review because it's involving a rezone. We'll be assessing impacts that are associated with the proposal as compared to those allowed by existing zoning and contrasting the relative increase or decrease on that. We'll look at all of the issues that were raised by, at the community meeting, both in the critical areas and others, and decide if there's a fatal flaw with the application that could not proceed. The application that would be considered in terms of the change of use by the rezone, what would be allowed there. If the rezone is approved ultimately, there would still need to be project-level review for any proposal that came forward, and that would be subject to review, public notice if required, for any discretionary permits. So it's fairly rigorous. At this point, we start off by saying, is it feasible? Could it be accommodated? Will it increase impacts to a significant level compared to what could go there? And we measure that using our adopted standards. So a fairly rigorous review leading to a rezone, that will be acted on should it be approved, subsequent application leading to review of the proposal.
Anything else? I'm myself very supportive of Lydia Place, and I do hope this goes through. We are, of course, only in the, just to reiterate, we are only deciding whether this is going to get reviewed. So the resolution that is in front of us, that has been moved and seconded, is to establish the docket of proposed Comprehensive Plan Amendments to be reviewed in 2015, 2016 for the zoning for Lydia Place. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0, and that concludes our public hearing, unless there's anyone else that has anything they wish to say? No? All right, thank you. That concludes our public hearing, and we are going to return back to public comment. So if we'll just give everyone a moment, because the chamber's probably going to empty, so. For public comment, period, we are going to start with Joseph McDonald, then Dennis Hare, and Martin Lett. Are you good to go, Elizabeth? Okay. All right, Joseph, it's all you.
My name is Joseph McDonald, and you know I have a speech about it. I would like to talk about religious fanaticism that goes on in this city, and that won't go away by ignoring it. Word on the streets is that everyone is going to burn hell forever. I have a confessional view of this. I believe the fires of hell go up after consuming its recipients. I don't even believe gay people burning hell for eternity. One has to ask themselves, can God be so cruel? I think every question he has to ask themselves, these two questions also. Also, number one, is Jesus Christ, just as sick and sadistic as Aiden Taylor, and A, number one, are the fires of Saudi Gomorrah still burning today? If this metaphoric cross-burned fanaticism is considered Christianity, then I want nothing to do with it. I don't think any religion has a market quarantined on truth. If anyone is arrogant enough to claim they know everything, you might suspect that they're wrong. I will say, I believe John 3:16 is the most quoted verse in the Bible, and John 3:17 is the most overlooked verse in the Bible. I also believe that religious fanaticism in the city, the religious fanatics in the city will soon eat the words they condemn people with. I urge the mayor, city council, and the citizens of Bellingham to take back their city and protest this fanaticism regardless of religious beliefs. I would like to remind the youth and everybody else that practicing your freedom of speech the youth and everybody else that practicing your freedom of speech is just as important, if not more important than voting. Considering the weather, this fanaticism goes on most of the time, starting at noon at Saturday's farmers' market, I feel it's good to protest the religious phonics, whether they're there or not. I can provide a sign or bring your own. Thank you, and God bless America.
Thank you, Joseph. Next is Dennis Hayner. And Martin Lett is next.
I am Dennis Hayner. I live in the Fairhaven District, and I'm here to object to the nature of the street lighting that's being introduced there. It's simply the wrong color, too white and blue rather than the old yellow lights that we had. The glitz of the fixtures is inconsistent with the nature of the Fairhaven neighborhood. And I would simply ask that we have lights that look like the old lights and have LEDs. I think LEDs certainly are efficient, and that would be a good feature, but I want it to look like it looked before.
Thank you, Dennis. Martin Lett?
Hi, my name's Martin Lot. As an energy efficiency engineer and resident of the Cornwall neighborhood, I'm in support of all the city's efforts to improve energy efficiency, residential and elsewhere. However, you know, I know firsthand that there are better options available, and that's why, you know, I want to support Mr. Jennings's efforts and others that have made comments that we explore those options further. Thanks.
Thank you, Martin. Rory O'Connor and Bob Holmes.
Hi, thanks. I'm Rory O'Connor. I live in the Columbia neighborhood. And I'm here to talk about the water bill, which is not news, but it's kind of on a lot of people's minds because those costs are really coming home to roost. And I'm a new homeowner just in the last couple of years. And I was surprised when I got my first water bill how high it was, and it's actually gone up five times since I moved in. So, and I had to say something, and I was terrified to hear that those costs are scheduled to increase until 2018. And I know the metering and the Lake Wacan projects are expensive, but you may not be able to reduce the fixed cost, but you might be able to reduce the incredibly high and incredibly hidden taxes, which I believe are 11% and 18% on water and sewer. So I just wanted to say that water and sewer are the, some of the most fundamental city services, and Bellingham does a great job providing those services, and the water is excellent. But I think affordability is part of that challenge, and I think that's a challenge that we need to address. And I would like you to, urge you to revisit that schedule of increases because I think we are at the breaking point in terms of affordability, at least in water. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Rory. Bob Holmes?
My name's Bob Holmes, and I'm a Broadway Park resident. I've lived on Broadway Park for 40 years. And when those lights came on after they changed them, I was just appalled. I mean, it was just something I just couldn't imagine that could have happened. And I'm not going to spend a lot of time. It just seems to me, as I look kind of in retrospect here, I think we had the same kaffu oh, three or four years ago, and it was on the south end, when we did a little re, put the Center Islands on Broadway and put in some lights there. And they were just the wrong lights. And then we had to go back and change them out. And here we are again. We've got some lights in there in pretty much a historic district. They're just not the right lights. I just don't know how else to say it. It's just completely changed the character of our neighborhood. So my hope is that, I guess, if I wanted to say a couple things, but first of all, obviously, I would like them changed back to something that, you know, more fits in with the neighborhoods. The second thing is whoever is in charge, and I don't even have any names, and I don't think that's the important issue. The issue is if we're going to make a change like this, it just doesn't seem like it would be that difficult to me to bring in some lights, put the light up, contact the four or five neighborhood associations, have them show up at night, give an opinion before we dive into a project like this and then have great regrets about it. I guess that's what concerns me as not as much, because obviously, I'm concerned about the lights, but I'm concerned about the process where we got here was just not properly handled. And all this could have, could have never, never, was absolutely not necessary had it been handled, I think, in a more respectful way to the neighborhoods. Thank you for your time and your service, because I don't want to do it.
Thank you, Bob. Is there anyone else that wished to speak at public comment this evening that didn't have an opportunity to sign their name down? If so, please come down to the podium. Anyone? Last call? Okay, I'm going to close public comment. And we're going to move on to our committee review from this afternoon. Our first committee was Public Works Public Safety, and Terry Bornham is the chair.
Thank you, Pinky. We had one item before the committee today, and it was a bid award for the 2014-2015 Water Main Replacement Program. 2014-15 Water Main Replacement Program involves a replacement of approximately 4,500 linear feet of water main piping at three project sites. In conjunction with the Water Main Replacement, the project also includes pedestrian bicycle channelization improvements and street overlay along East Chestnut Street, Champion Street. The city received seven bids, which were publicly opened on March 17, 2016. Ram Construction General Contractors, Inc. was the responsible bidder who submitted the lowest responsive bid of $1,771,430.67, including Washington State sales or use tax on applicable bid schedules. The engineers estimate, including sales tax on applicable schedules, was $2,102,1842.38. The committee recommended approval, and I so moved.
Second. Any discussion? We have a motion in front of us for the bid award for the Water Main Replacement Program. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And that's end of committee. And we'll move on to community and economic development, and April Barker is the chair.
Hi, we had one item today in the committee. It was on March 7, council meeting. Bellingham City Council requested staff to provide a briefing on local options to increase the availability of television closed captioning at local public facilities. The attached memo, which you can read in the packet, discussed some efforts elsewhere to improve the availability of closed captioning, and also some preliminary estimates of cost for adding closed captioning to our city broadcast. You can watch the comments from staff as well as council during our afternoon meeting. At the end of the meeting, there was a motion requesting the mayor to direct staff to work with the hospitality community, to educate them and see, I guess, encourage them to utilize closed captioning. There was a mixed review, and that was the end of committee.
Thank you, April. We had seven items in front of us today for committee of the whole.
Does anyone want to make a?
Yeah.
I don't know if she's going to make the motion or not.
Oh, this is my first report of committee, so I'm learning.
Okay.
So I'm not quite sure once it's a mixed, so I need a little bit of guidance.
Mixed recommendation, you just make the motion.
You still make a motion.
So, yeah, the motion was to, well, request the mayor to direct staff to work with the hospitality community to educate and encourage utilizing closed caption. Is there a second?
So all you have to say is, I so move?
I so move.
And then usually Roxanne will jump on that second. There we go. So we have a motion in front of us to investigate options in the community and the hospitality industry for closed hearing options. And all those in favor, please say, oh, I'm sorry. Well, look at this. We're falling apart all over the place. Councilmember Lillyquist.
I would like to discuss the motion on the table, or before us. I voted no, just because I don't kind of feel this issue is ripe yet. I believe closed captioning is really smart, easy thing for any business to do. I think they ought to do it. It just wasn't clear to me yet that this issue was ripe enough, understood enough, why people in the business do or don't, or would or wouldn't be willing to automatically turn the closed captioning. I just, it just felt like we were gearing up for a city effort, and I didn't think we needed to go that heavy just yet. As the administration indicated, it would go on the back of the list of things to get to. I talked briefly with Gaia Ocho Gross of the Chamber of Commerce. He's, you know, willing to kind of start a low-level conversation with the business community. I just wanted to kind of just go a little bit softer, not so officially, on this effort. I think closed captioning is a good idea, and people should do it. I just didn't know if I wanted to make a city case out of it yet.
And, you know, one of the things that came up this afternoon that the mayor stated was that we want to learn, we want to lead by example. And it's difficult for us to ask people to do something that we don't have the capability to do ourselves. So that was part of the discussion. And in regards to the motion this evening, again, we said that we would look at the action itself, but in regards to our level of service and where we are at, that this will go on our list of things that has to be, that we're going to investigate in the future in far as our capabilities go with the council and with the staff. Mayor Linville, is there anything you wanted to add on that?
Well, I think I just want to clarify, because I heard you and April say two different things. And I think that what I heard this afternoon is that we would, it would be a work item to come up with options about educating and, you know, doing that type of thing, not necessarily a motion tonight for us to go out and do it. Because we're not ready to go out and do it, because we don't know what we would be doing. So I want to make sure that, because I heard April say we were going to go out and do it, and I heard you say we were going to explore options. And I just want to make sure that it's April's motion, but that everybody knows what the motion is.
Well, my motion is that I think I would like you to direct staff to go out and speak with the hospitality community to educate and encourage, get more feedback.
I under, and that makes, that makes perfect sense as a direction. And it is, it's also a staff project which will go on the bottom of our work plan.
Yeah.
If that's what you guys adopt tonight. Thank you, April.
Councilmember Murphy.
If this motion fails, which I'm guessing it might, we also have the ability as council members to go out and do this work, and I think that would be justly served by our public service.
Councilmember Parker.
So the reason why this came forward is we had community members from the deaf and hard of hearing community approach the council, because they have been to the hospitality industry, and they have asked for people to turn on closed caption, and they get mixed review on whether people are willing to do that or not. I think none of us are, as far as I know, deaf or hard of hearing, and so we don't understand what that is like to walk into a facility and be rejected. And I don't think, I have not seen this community, for all that I have watched on city council, come forward to be, I guess, to be inflammatory. I think that they've brought forward a very reasonable concern. I think they've tried to work within that hospitality industry, and they were asking for an ordinance, and I think it would behoove the council to at least respond by directing staff, even if it has to wait a couple of months, to engage the hospitality industry, to educate and find out why or why not it's happening, and then how can we encourage? And if that doesn't work, then we have to come back with a new plan.
Councilmember Hamel.
I'm absolutely supportive of closed captioning. I'm supportive of starting a task force that looks at accessibility issues, not just for deaf and hard of hearing, but also mobility issues and other issues. But what I don't want to do is direct the staff, direct this very important work to be, go to the bottom of the list, where staff has already, has a stack of, in their workload, that they wouldn't be able to get to this. And I don't know if it's two months, or four months, or next year when this would happen. Do you have a sense of when this could be looked at?
Well, I think as we go through our work plan discussion for this year, it would probably mean taking something off the work plan to do this, but that's completely within the purview of the council to do that. I think that's where it would come up. Now, that doesn't mean that people can't go talk to people and ask them if they'll turn closed caption on or anything else. It just means that we're trying to have a consistent work plan that we're promising to implement, which means we have to have the staff and the resources to do it. And we can change our work plan at the council's request.
Councilmember, please.
I'm going to make an amendment, that we make this council-driven, that the council go out and do the, do the resources, go out and talk to the community, talk to whoever we need to talk to.
Are you okay with that, Councilmember Parker?
Is that then bringing it back to committee once, do we have a date that we'd like to bring it back to let the?
Well, as long as we can get Mark probably to work on it. Maybe Marie can do some work on it, too. We've got, we've got our own staff, and there's no reason why we can't do this.
I accept the amendment.
Okay.
Okay. Does everyone go with that? All right. I'm going to support this. I do want to ensure that we are setting people's expectations, that we're not going to be able to solve this in a couple, maybe in a couple of months. So, but that it is important, and we will try and move things forward.
Point of order? There was a motion to amend, and April seconded it, but we didn't actually approve the amendment. I think there's no.
We have to vote on the amendment first.
No, no, there's an easy way of saying if there's no objections. That's a virtual vote. But I want to make sure we know what version we're talking about.
We're going to vote on the amendment first.
Okay.
Sorry, I just wanted to get my comment out there. Is there anyone else who has any other comments?
You realize sometimes the president gets no say, right?
I'm going to take notes, right? Yeah. Councilmember Bornham.
Yeah, I'll vote for this, because this is what we've already started. The conversation has started. I know I have spoken with members of the hospitality committee. April has talked with members of the hospitality committee. I know others have talked with, you know, individual owners and other things. This has been out there. We've gotten some input. So that process has begun. And, and so we're already doing that, so I, you know, I will support that. If, as long as we, and we're making it clear that we're not, we're not doing, looking at, at this point, doing any kind of ordinance, mandating that everybody, you know, has to do these certain things. But, you know, in terms of asking council people to continue doing what they're already doing, doing due diligence, I can support that.
So we're going to vote on the amendment first, which the amendment, and help me if I'm not reiterating this correctly, is that the council will take the first initial steps with the community and the hospitality industry to investigate a closed captioning hearing.
Correct.
Okay, we have a motion in front of us. Do I have a second?
Yeah, it's already been.
Oh, it's second. The amendment's been seconded. Okay, moving right along. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion amendment passes seven zero. We will now return back to the original motion, as, which has now been amended. All right. Any more discussion? All right, good to go. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And that is the end of the community and economic development. We are going to move on to the committee of the whole. We had seven items in front of us today. Our first presentation was by the Bellingham Police Department, who provided an update on the body worn, body worn cameras. So I'm just going to give you a little bit... So I'm just going to give you a little bit of a synopsis of what was presented to us today, but just know that if anyone is interested in the entire information, please do watch the committee meeting minutes. We did start this program as an experimentation with 30 cameras, and in 2014, actually, I don't have that information in front of me, so if I'm, if I'm stating any of these numbers, please, you can correct me. And then we have now purchased up to 110 of these cameras, and as of July 16, sorry, July 1 of 2016, they will be mandatory for the Bellingham Police Department to wear the body worn cameras. Just some of the statistics and some of the also anecdotal information, as Chief Cook did tell us that there was a lot of skepticism and concerns in regards to using the body worn cameras. Some people consider, were worried that they would be used as all evidence, or that they wouldn't be provided, and through our experience of actually using the cameras, that the police department and the community has learned a lot through this process and found it very beneficial. And police officers and community members, who were initially very skeptical, have now faced most of those concerns that have come out to the other side, saying these are really great in regards to protecting our community and protecting our police officers. And most of the officers that are wearing these body cameras now would absolutely not give them up. They find them a wonderful addition to their very heavy tool belt that they wear. Just some statistical information that was given to us this afternoon in regards to where the cameras were invoked in situations, and he also gave us a breakdown, a breakdown in regards to all the, you know, misdemeanors, felonies, et cetera, that happened through our community in 2015. One thing to be pointed out is that in 2015, there were 572 calls that involved mental health suffering. So people who are suffering from mental health issues, they had, we had 572 calls, and 284 of those were recorded with the body, with the body worn cameras. So this really helps in regards to supporting our community and looking at the actual issues that are in front of us. Another number that was quite, I thought, significant in regards to the amount of uses with the cameras. So just for information, they are not deployed 24 hours a day, these cameras, because all of this, all of this data has to be stored and downloaded. So therefore, when a police officer is in an incident where they believe that it should be recorded, they do activate those cameras. So they're not 24 activated, but they are on incident report. So if there is, let's see, so, just, just taking a look, make sure I'm covering everything in here. Also, one thing is the Bellingham Police Department did notice that officers reported changes in behavior when Bellingham citizens, when notice was occurred that they were going to be filmed on camera. And their, your, incident rate did decline slightly in 2015. There are probably multiple factors included in that, but that is a statistic that we like to hear. Is there anything else that I'm missing that anyone wanted to point out about those? Councilmember Lillquist.
I just wanted to tell people that we do not retain these video recordings longer than 90 days unless they're involved in a case or a legal reason to do so. That was my biggest concern. I don't want a bunch of video of the public for no reason. So we do destroy the video after 90 days, if it's not, you know, used for a reason.
Thank you, Councilmember Lillquist. And as I said, the, all of the information is on our committee meetings from this afternoon, if anybody wants to watch that. The next item for us was the discussion of the FAST report, the Capitol Facilities Task Force Report, and an administrative structure review. Bless you. We are, this was an opportunity for, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, Rick Seppler, for us to ask questions in regards to our level of service and the presentations that have been put for us so far in the beginning of March. And we will be continuing this discussion again at our retreat on Saturday. The third item in front of us was the Waterfront District Implementation Status Report. We had a presentation from Sarah, Tara Sundin, Leslie Bryson, and Anthony Freeman on the waterfront district. The things that they were reporting out to us is in regards to where we are with the design plan, and this is the street level, in regards to in front of the Granary Avenue and Laurel Street. And this is, the pre-design is complete, and we are about 30%, 30% done in the design submittal. And just for curiosity, because I know people are wondering when things are going to happen down at the waterfront, yes, they are happening. So one of the things to note is that in 2017, so the Harcourt, our developer, is working on the Granary building, and the develop, right now, our cleanup is happening down there, and we are hoping to have that completed by the end of 2016 or spring of 2017. And they're hoping to have the first phase open, which could include the Granary building. Right now, there is some emergency repair that happens to that building, and they are hoping to have that open by the end of 2017. We should have access to part of our first phase of the waterfront development by the end of 2017. Can you believe we are saying that? Wow. Okay, so, progress down at the waterfront. The fourth item in front of us was the Resolution Regarding Establishing the Bellingham Waterfront Redevelopment Opportunity Zone. This is because the state, through the Matka Act, has created a new tool to promote cleanup and redevelopment of brownfields. If we change, designate our brownfield areas within the jurisdiction as a redevelopment opportunity zone, called ROZ, there are more grants that will become available for us if we rezone this to RS, ROZ. And staff recommends the city establish our ROZ for the city and port-owned brownfield properties in the area, shown on Exhibit A. And there are eight of them, and we had a resolution in front of us today, which was, we had a recommendation to three zero to go forward. And with that, I so move on the Resolution Regarding Establishing the Bellingham Waterfront Redevelopment Opportunity Zone.
Second. She, she had her hand cocked there.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes seven zero.
Every time I say aye over here, I feel like Jack's going to strike me dead here. This chair's not used to saying aye very much. Starting to feel a little squeamish here.
Our next item was the Waukam County EMS Funding Work Group Recommendation, and we had an excellent presentation today by Chief Newbold. And in summation, this was an oversight board that worked for over a year, and committees from many different departments, from the different fire departments, from the city, from the county, who all sat together and did not agree when they first started conversation, and came to a place where everyone felt as though this was the right thing for us to do moving forward. And before we get into this, I'm just going to take a moment, maybe, Councilmember Berman, if there's anything that you would like to say in regards to the proposal that was given to us on EMS today.
Just that, this was one of the, the better processes that I've been involved with over the last 16 years that I've served on the council, to bring together so many different interests to work on this proposal. And one we didn't mention, labor, was involved, both from the Bellingham Fire Department and from the Ferndale Fire Department. And so, so we had the management, we had the chiefs, we had, we had the electeds, all involved, trying to work for a common good. We, and that's a unified EMS system. And we worked for a year, meeting every couple of weeks, to work through all the difficult problems, to find the compromises that would work for everyone and work for the, best for the citizens of Waukam County. And I was really proud to be part of that, and I, I hope that, I know we've asked the, the council to look over this closely, because it is a very complicated document that we're looking at, and look through that, ask questions of chief or myself over the next couple of weeks, and I hope everyone can come back and unanimously approve this and, to recommend to the county to go forward with this. So, yeah, that's about it. But this is a really, this is really important for all of the residents of, of the county.
So in, in summation of the proposal, and again, thank you to everyone who worked on that committee, thank you so much for that. The recommendations from the Funding Work Group were a 29.5 cent EMS levy rate, a six-year EMS levy, and that it be put on the November 2016 general election ballot. So this is for information only at this point, but we had very positive response from everyone on the council today about this recommendation. And our sixth item from the committee today was a resolution adopting a statement of incarceration prevention, criminal justice, and jail planning principles. In March 2016, the Waukam County Council adopted a statement of incarceration prevention, criminal justice, and jail planning principles for Waukam County's criminal justice and behavioral health systems. The county council called on other legislative authorities that have a stake in our shared criminal justice system to adopt the same or similar statements as soon as possible. This resolution adopts the Bellingham City Council's statement of incarceration prevention, criminal justice, and jail planning principles. We did have one amendment today and some grammatical changes. So Peter, does that mean that you're going to read out the, okay, thank you.
Peter Rofato, City Attorney's Office. I'll just read, I'll just go through the red line that you have in front of you for the record, the changes made in committee. The first, the first "be it further resolved" paragraph now reads, "Due to the ever escalating costs of such investments, time is of the essence for drafting a new collaborative proposal to put before the voters as soon as feasible." The next change, and I believe this was by consensus as well, this is page one, under the actual principles, third paragraph, second sentence, it will read, "We will strive for conditions where the cycle of incarceration is broken rather than perpetuated." Number eight, still on that same page, "We support the location of any new jail facility where it can work best for all of our partners, the public, and related businesses." And then under 10, "We support the apportionment of construction and operating costs separately and fairly among jail users based on actual use or best estimate of actual future use."
Thank you, Peter. The committee reviewed this this afternoon, and we had a unanimous recommendation. And therefore, I so move that we, the resolution adopting a statement of incarceration prevention, criminal justice, and jail planning principles. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And I just wanted to add that this afternoon, when we did discuss this, we talked about the city as a whole being prepared for this kind of conversation, and we asked the mayor's staff to come back to us with a prepared list of options for funding and incarceration and jail alternatives at as soon as possible. Feasible. And our seventh item on the Committee of the Whole today was on the current and anticipated service delivery models. We did have a little presentation from the Director, Rick Seppler, and Mayor Kelly Linville. And this laid out all the department heads' concerns in regards to level of service over the next couple of years, and it breaks it down into what they think their needs are, what they think they can live without, and what is really urgent. And I encourage the public to review this document, because it's laid out really wonderfully. It's easy to understand and see where all of our departments are, and get a good basis for our discussion on level of service. This was for information only. Is there anything you care to add to that? Thank you, Rick. Okay, and that was the last item on our Committee of the Whole today. We are going to move to our meeting minutes. We have one set of minutes in front of us today, and these are for the council meeting minutes of March 21st. Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Older new business? Anyone? Okay. All right. Well, that was nice and simple. We did have an executive session today, and our report out is, we did have potential litigation. Staff provided information on potential litigation matter. Direction was given, no action was taken. Our second item was a labor relations bargaining strategy. Staff provided information on a labor relations bargaining strategy. Direction was given, and no action was taken. And now we will move to the mayor's report.
And I will be quick. I have, let's see, the first three appointments I have are information only. Craig Funston to the Bellingham Housing Authority Board, reappointment of John Marshall to the Community Development Advisory Board, appointment of Janice Carmichael and Courtney Lang to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. This, the last two need your approval. First is a reappointment of Garrett O'Brien to the Planning and Development Commission.
Move approval.
Second? Motion in front of us to reappoint Garrett O'Brien to the Planning and Development Commission. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
And then the last appointment is of Abe Lloyd and Alan Richardson to the Lake Waukam Watershed Advisory Board.
Move approval.
Second.
All those approval, sorry, all those.
All those approving, say approval.
All those approving. So we are voting on the appointment of Abe Lloyd and Alan Richardson to the Lake Waukam Watershed Advisory Board. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
And then I just have three more things I'd like to mention. One is the Downtown Historic Tour web application, built by Katie Newell and Katie Franks, won an award. So it's always nice to, to talk about awards, granted by the State Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation, and it will be presented May 17 in Olympia, and it's on our homepage, so you can find it. Secondly, we did have a boat fire on Lake Waukam. I'm sure most of you have heard about that. The bottom line is, the people at the water treatment plant have seen no change in our water quality, and they responded right away, and ecology did not even bother to send staff. So I think it was, even though it was a fire in a boat, it was somewhat minor. The last thing is, I was going to ask Chief Cook this question when he was talking to you all about the body cams, but it didn't really fit with body cams, but he did mention about mental health and the number of contacts that we had about mental health. Dan and I sit on the, the alter, what's it called, Jack?
Alternative Task Force?
Yeah, it has a longer name, but whatever.
It does have a really long name.
Prevention Reduction Task Force.
Yes. And so we've been talking, obviously, a lot about how we move people from the jail, but also how we prevent people from going to the jail. And there was information in Dan, I don't know if you were surprised about it, that was presented, about the fact that mental illness is not a big factor in criminology. And I have, I have been under the impression that... And I have been under the impression that partially people that are mentally ill may do things that they're not aware of or responsible for. And it does land them in jail, but I'm not sure now why. Substance, drug and substance abuse was considered a high factor. And I sit on the ad hoc committee for behavioral. And we went through a lot of the criminogenic, something like that, causes and causations and related. And I was thinking that that might be interesting for us to hear as a group, so that, first of all, we either can question things if we have questions about them, or we are informed enough to know that when we talk about where we're putting our money for alternatives, that we're real clear about what causations are. And in general, nothing else surprised me. Homelessness, associates, and substance abuse, a lot of things that were things that we may all assume. But the mental health part was a surprise to me. I don't know, did you know that already?
I think this was the presentation by Ann Deacon from Wacom County Health Department. My take on that was that, sorry, was that she was trying to disassociate, like, not all people with mental health commit crimes. That's absolutely true.
Right.
But I think that there is still a driver there when it comes to people who are especially co-occurring, mental health illness and substance use disorder. I think that that's where the mix was in her presentation. But yeah, I was mildly surprised that it wasn't more of a driver.
Well, when we talk about people, especially people that are public defenders, who are defending the people that are in the jail, and there is one on our task force, and one of the beginning meetings she said, almost all her clients had some amount of mental health issues. Well, it kind of sounds different. So if you don't mind, I'd like to put together a presentation of the kind of information we've got in the behavioral ad hoc group, so that you have a little more information to consider.
I think that would be a good idea, but in terms of the thing on the mental health, I think one of the reasons you don't see the statistics come out as mental health-driven is because the court's really reluctant to admit that mental health was a contributing factor to this, because then you've got a whole different animal. Were they responsible, or was it the mental health? If you say it was a mental health issue, then it's pretty hard getting that kind of conviction if you're saying mental health, the person's mental health was the cause. If that was the cause, then they're not necessarily capable of standing trial for that. It's a different animal. So they just kind of push that aside as, unless that is, unless you're criminally insane. Or, you know, if you can approve that totally, it's not usually considered a contributing factor with their statistics.
Well, and we've talked a lot about the fact that we need substance abuse and mental health beds. And I still believe that. But I'd like to understand the relationship just a little bit better between the two, because I'd like to be an advocate in that group for mental health treatment. So with that, you'd be excused, except you still have to vote. Sorry.
I think that would be a great presentation. Thank you very much, Mayor Linville. So next, we have the Consent Agenda. Approval.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. All right. So the next meeting of the Bellingham City Council will be next Monday, April 18th. And thank you all for joining us. Till next time, good night. We are adjourned.